Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 and I'd like to welcome you to the very last Planning Commission meeting of 2020, 2021, excuse me. Could you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy.
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield.
Here.
Mr. Provenzano.
Here.
Mr. Shudo.
Here.
Mr. Spataforo.
Here.
Mr. Oliver.
Here.
And Mr. Bentley, present.
We have everybody present. At this time, I believe our supervisor, Mr. Viviana, would like to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, if you were not aware, today is the last meeting for two of our long-serving planning commissioners. And I just wanted to take a minute to thank them for their service and present them with a couple of awards. So I will read this for the record. In honor of your outstanding contributions to your community, this Macomb Township Award for Service is hereby presented to Nunzio Provenzano in recognition of your 15 years of dedication to the Macomb Township Planning Commission. And likewise, in honor of your outstanding contributions to your community, this Macomb Township Award for Service is hereby presented to Jasper Shudo in recognition of your 14 years of dedication to the Macomb Township Planning Commission. Gentlemen, your contributions have been extremely important to this community as we have developed and grown, and you will definitely be missed. I appreciate everything you've done.
I think he's throwing us out already, not turning himself around. What a very nice surprise. You okay, Mr. Shudo?
I am.
Okay. All right, let's move on to approval of previous meeting minutes. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, there's no additions, deletions, or corrections. I may motionally accept the meeting minutes as read.
Motion by Mr. Shudo.
I'll second it.
Seconded him by Mr. Bentley. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item, approval of tonight's agenda. Any thoughts, questions, concerns?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as read.
Motion by Mr. Shudo.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Tuckfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We pass unanimously. All right, let's move on to new business public hearings. Revised Final Plan, Wellington Estates, permanent parcel 0816-100024, located on the south side of 24 Mile Road, a quarter mile east of Romeo Plank, Section 16. TRE Development petitioner, Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. So we are looking at Wellington Estates. They are doing a revision to their final plan that was approved by this Planning Commission a number of months ago. So if you look at the screen there, Wellington Estates is the one on the yellow. Wellington West is the neighboring development, which also has a plan in that's been approved by the Planning Commission. But if you notice, at the time Wellington Estates came through, the southern portion of Wellington West is kind of a finger that juts out into what is Wellington Estates. Since the time that this was approved, Wellington Estates has acquired that property that sits just south of their area. So the previously approved plans designated that area, as you see here, as common area. What they have done is added three additional lots on the southern end. Once they've acquired that, they now have the depth required to have three more lots on their development for a total of 149 lots. So with the addition of those lots, and because of those lots, they had to do some renumbering. But outside of that, I don't believe anything else has changed in the plan that was previously approved. So that being said, I think all of our staff is recommending approval at this time.
Okay. Is the petitioner here? No? Okay. Then questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just had one from Mr. Box. Mr. Box, I know we've seen this before, but specifically what would now be numbered Lot 35, which would be just by the north end of the drain there. Are you comfortable there's enough buildable area there? I'm sure you guys have done the measurements on it. It just looks like a difficult-shaped lot for the building envelope.
We did look through them, and I don't think we had any concerns. But let me pull up the plan in front of me here, just so I make sure we're looking at the same item. You said Lot 35?
I believe it's 35. I have a small printout. It would be on the south side of the north end of the drain. So two lots south of the tee between Wellington and might be Mobile Drive. Mobile Drive? Nope. Not sure that's printed good enough resolution to be able to see it.
It is 35.
Yeah, it's a little tough to see. I have a small version in front of me, too, to see the dimensions. But I do know that Mr. Skirdo, who's not here this evening, and Melissa did go through this thoroughly, and I do trust that they are confident that that's a buildable lot.
I'm pretty sure we looked at this before you guys came on, and so I figured you probably had, but just wanted to double-check, because it looked pretty tight.
Oh, Mr. Van Tiflin makes a good point here. That's actually part of Phase 1 that's already been built anyways.
Then it's a moot point. Very good. Yeah, because the phasing is just to the south side of that leg that's coming down. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Box.
Thank you. Anyone else, Commissioners? Anyone? Okay, well, the petitioner is not here. Do we have a motion for this item?
Do we need to open it to the public, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much. One last time, Mr. Shudo. At this time, I'd like to open it to the public. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Shudo, seconded by Mr. Spataforo. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that will be at 6:38. And as we open the public hearing for this item, any person wishing to speak will be recognized and will be asked to give their name and address before speaking. We ask that all speakers limit their comments to four minutes. Once public portion is closed, we will not recognize any further discussion or comments from the community on the item. Is there anyone that would like to speak about Wellington Estates? Anyone? Did I see a nod over there? No? Are you sure? Okay. All right. What about the two in the back there? Anything? No?
Daniel.
Please come up to the podium and state your name and address, please, sir. Remember, you're speaking on Wellington Estates, Item A.
Daniel Parker, 52045 Monaco. So my biggest concern is, we are, Monaco is the north-south street that borders that, we'll call it the handle, the panhandle there. And I believe that's going to be TRE's Phase 4. But the biggest concern is, we went to the office where they're selling the lots now, and everything behind Monaco is going to be non-brick buildings or homes. Everything on Monaco and everything in Westwood Estates is brick, and they're beautiful homes. Everything that's going to be behind there is going to be, you know, siding. It's not going to fit in. So our concern is the property values when they start building in that panhandle. And I know TRE's not here, but, you know, this is our backyard, and everyone else that lives in a nice neighborhood, they want the same type of homes behind them or around them. And it's not going to be that way. So we're really disappointed. Normally, the township is so strict about keeping everything, you know, the building types and everything, it's just the same from one community to the next or one subdivision, and it's not going to be that way. That's our backyard. So our biggest concern is property value and the way things are going to look. Who moves in? So I'm not really, there's no question I can give you the commission here, the Planning Commission, but that's our concern.
This is a time to address the concerns, so I appreciate your concerns.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Barbas. I currently live at 53118 Free to Drive, but I am Lot 19 in the phase there for tree building. And I kind of, I came tonight just to see the progress. I was the first one to sign in to purchase a home in the area. Kind of was a little taken back by the gentleman's comments about these not being beautiful homes. The reason I chose this builder was because I really do like the home. I think they're doing a very good job. I've seen other homes that the builder has built, and I believe across the street on 24 Mile, there's another subdivision that is not all brick homes. They have siding. I'm not sure of the builder there. So I don't see that. If anything, I think having more new homes in the area is going to bring up the value of the area. And again, you know, I'm anxious to be a taxpayer in Macomb Township again, so I'm looking forward to this. My whole purpose was to see if we could get this passed and get my home built soon. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to come up? Okay, at this time, let's close the public portion at 6:43 with a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Provenzano. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Box?
Yes, sir.
Want to talk about the homes in the panhandle?
So as far as building materials, I guess there wasn't really a direct question, but the only area within the township that we have more stringent or strict materials is Town Hall, or the Town Center area, Section 9. And that is not this area. There are a number of neighborhoods around Macomb Township that have some brick houses, some that have brick and siding, some that are all siding. That's really something that the Building Department handles, what's acceptable materials to use for a structure. I know I live in the township, my neighborhood, my house is all brick, my neighbor's house has brick and siding. I think that's pretty commonplace these days.
Okay. All right, Mr. Spataforo.
Yeah, Mr. Box says, as you know, often in these type of developments, and this is, I think, a proposed fourth phase, there's probably, if it was developed as a site condominium, be a, you know, a master deed with bylaws in the Exhibit B drawings. And oftentimes, within the bylaws, there's like an architectural paragraph in there that could specify the building materials and bricks. Do you know often, recall offhand, you know, as to Wellington Estates, by chance, if you check that out?
I do not know off the top of my head, but you're correct, yes.
Okay. Just curious, because if, you know, the other homes in the earlier phases have some sort of brick in there, my guess is there's something, language within probably the bylaws that would address what the builder, you know, has to build as far as
There would be.
That, which would be shown, of course, on elevations when they come in for plan approval at some point in the future.
That's correct. But I would say that, I think the gentleman mentioned he lived on Monaco, which that is a different development.
Right.
So he would be under a different set of bylaws than the development here.
Yep, that is correct. Okay. All right, thanks.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Bentley?
Generally, at this stage, for the approval process that we have, it would be a later stage where we'd start looking at elevations and materials. Is that correct?
That would be through the Building Department, when they come in, you know, with plot plans and all of that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion for this item?
Anybody who would like to make the motion?
If there's no further discussion, Mr. Chairman, I would recommend revised final plan approval for Wellington Estates. That's permanent parcel number 081610024, as presented by our planner and with the department reviews.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spataforo, supported by Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
I will. Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes? Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Onto old business. Planned unit development, general design Fremont, permanent parcel 0835100004, located on the southeast corner of 21 Mile Road, 21 Mile Road and Card Road, Section 35, MM 21 Card, LLC petitioner, Mr. Box.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. So this is an item that's come before you actually a couple of times. The concept plan was approved last year. They did come before you once before with the general design plan, but their PUD agreement was not in the packet that evening. And since then, I think they've made some changes with regards to the layout and what uses they're going to put in certain areas. So I know it's been on the agenda for a while, and it's finally, finally back here and ready to move forward with these gentlemen. So that's the phase we're in, the general design plan. So as you saw in your packet, they have two different layouts proposed. Layout 1, the large, the primary difference being Phase 5 and 5 and 6. So it appears they're a little uncertain maybe what is going to take place in Phase 5. Do they want one unit there or two units there? I know there was discussion when they were in previously about another drive entrance on 21 Mile, and I believe the Road Department has determined that they will not have another entrance, so they've moved forward with designs accordingly. So these are tentative phases that they will have. And again, Phase 5 and 5 and 6 are kind of the differences between the two alternate layouts. So they have met all the setbacks and the site distances with regards to residential. The building heights have met, they've met all the floor area requirements as well, essentially all the typical standards we look for with regards to residential. The residential component of this does meet those, and that's in Phase 1. With regards to all the commercial dimensions, again, setbacks have been met, distance between buildings, minimum floor area, as well as the open space. They're actually providing more open space than what is required. And they do have, and again, so you saw earlier, a Phase 5 or a Phase 5 and 6, but they do have a proposed layout if it's just Phase 5 as being a childcare center. And if they do move forward with that as their option, they do have sufficient play area. Items like parking, the calculations and dimensions will be reviewed during the site plan review, as some of these, you know, specific uses could potentially, you know, certain users may change. It would be the same use, but maybe a different user. But with regards to the parking, we will review that at the site plan. Additionally, the drop-off and pickup areas, if they do move forward with a childcare facility, would be addressed at that time. One thing that the Planning Commission does have some purview with tonight is with regards to Spring Valley Drive, on whether or not that can be a private drive. So we do allow private drives in the township under certain conditions, and that's something that you would have some purview to discuss this evening. As far as screening, they are providing the necessary screening between the residential component and the commercial pieces. They have eight-foot pathways throughout the project area that connects their open spaces and residents who may want to patronize some of the businesses that they have in the front. They additionally have the sidewalks on what they're proposing as the private drive. The eight-foot walk is proposed along 21 Mile. I believe the one on Card Road is existing at this time. And again, they're connecting the residential areas with the commercial areas via the pathway that they're show, that is shown here. With regards to signs, they do have a number of signs proposed. At this time, they all meet the setback requirements. They have the right dimensions. They're out of the clear zone area, and they do meet all of our standards. And none of their square footage of the signs proposed in their package would exceed 60 feet. The following items are things that are outstanding that would need to be addressed were any approval given this evening that would need to be conditioned on. Engineering has requested a couple sheets be removed from the plans that would potentially be approved, that being the utility and general common element plans. That's something that will be handled later. We don't want any confusion that if something is stamped approved through the planning process, that it's perceived as approved later on when they get to engineering. So we would remove those two items from the packet were it to be approved, as well as the walk dimensions near the childcare use. They do show a five-foot sidewalk there. Really, at this phase, they don't need to show any dimensions there, but it would need to be seven feet, not five feet, were it to go through at that way. So we would recommend that they actually just remove that dimension, and it's something that would be handled at site plan. With regards to the private road, again, that's something I think the Planning Commission has the purview to discuss and evaluate.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Box. Petitioner, come on up. Can you state your name and address, and do you have anything you'd like to share? You could go to the table if you'd like, Mr. Izzy.
Yes, sir.
Looks like you got your hands full.
Thank you. Go ahead and grab that.
Good evening. My name is Mario Izzy. I'm with MJC Companies, 46600 Romeo Plank, Suite Number 5, Macomb Township. Thank you for the opportunity this evening. We're basically here to answer any questions and maybe give some clarification as to the last meeting we had before you. I think one thing I definitely guaranteed at the last time we met was that the site plan that ultimately would be approved would not be what we approved at the last meeting, because the face of the commercial business model has changed with COVID, the tenants, national tenants, regional tenants. So what we have today with the site, just a brief overview, we have a purchase agreement with the gas station on the corner, so that is a locked-in deal as far as we're concerned. We have a locked-in deal purchase agreement for the car wash. So as far as we're concerned, we're moving forward with that one. The Valvoline, the instant oil change, we are in the final little details of wrapping up a long-term lease agreement with the Valvoline. The site plan shows two parcels on the far east. We had originally proposed two separate pads, two separate buildings with drive-throughs at that time, with the outlet for ingress egress on the 21 Mile Road. We submitted to the Road Commission. They weren't necessarily overenthused with that location. While we were considering how we were going to negotiate that, we got an offer from a childcare facility. They did not, we didn't feel that they needed that secondary ingress egress out to 21 Mile Road. Traffic study doesn't require them to have that. We feel that there's adequate ingress egress on the Card Road and 21 Mile Road. So bottom line, the site plan that you see before you, we're very comfortable that that is what we're going to end up with. We even have a backup childcare business that's even looking at this, at this location as well. So we're very confident that we're going to get a childcare business on that far east, those two far east pads. So, and we're very eager to get started on the duplex development as well. We've gotten started on the engineering. We appreciate the opportunity to do that. Maybe that's why we were a little overzealous with some of the information that we submitted on the conceptual PED plan. So any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
I had a couple.
Yeah.
The residential.
Yes, sir.
The duplexes. Is that going to be, you're going to have an association with the association fees, you're going to take care of that?
Yes, sir. We initially, with all of our condominium developments, whether it's single-family or duplex, we will initially handle the management of that operation. Eventually, we will turn that over to a management company. Ultimately, the HOA has the ability, once we turn that over to the Board of Directors, they can self-manage or they can continue with the property management company that we may have selected in the beginning. But the private road proposed, the HOA would be assessed for future maintenance, any special assessments, the normal things that I think sometimes our Road Commission is maybe, maybe too busy and has other bigger projects that they might want to be more concerned with, with federal funding, state funding. A local road like this might be better suited for the local HOA to handle maintenance, future maintenance.
One other question. I looked at your site plan, and I noticed everything's freestanding.
Yes, sir.
Years ago, everything was, the cluster, Kroger's was in a shopping plaza, then Kroger's moved to freestanding and everything like that. With drive-throughs and pickups, do you think this is the sign of the future for commercial in our township, that everything's in a, probably be more freestanding with drive-throughs and pickups and single buildings in a cluster?
If I may, sir. Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
I agree with that, with that observation. Since COVID, we thought, especially with the food business, we've seen a lot of our tenants change over in some of our other commercial developments. The dining experience has certainly changed. So curbside delivery has become a big part of commercial food, fast food, you know, the business model. Obviously, the drive-through business, you can't have enough of it. And I understand that that isn't given very easily in some locations, and it's, the traffic has to support it, and the ingress egress is very important for that. So yes, sir, to answer your question, I think this is the trend for now, unless things change. I mean, the only constant is change. We know that. But for the foreseeable future, I would agree with what you're seeing is going to be the trend, more freestanding, especially with the tenants. We're getting less and less of the local kind of mom-and-pop-type business owners. They will generally maybe go to more of the inline, traditional, commercial shopping centers, whereas the freestanding businesses, obviously, this is an expensive corner. This was not a cheap piece of property to buy. So in order for us to, you know, do what we do, to make money at this business and provide jobs and move forward to the next development, we have to charge what we have to charge. In order to do that, you're, we're dealing with more of a regional or a national, either tenant or purchaser. So yes, I think this is the trend for now.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shudo. Commissioners, do you have anything else?
Public hearing first, or no?
No, no, we go to Commissioners first. I would go public.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Oliver?
Mr. Box, can you get back to this road, right now as it stands, it's a, it's a public road?
The way that they're proposing it is as a private.
Private road. What would be the advantage right now to have it a private road? Maybe the petitioner, somebody could answer that.
Well, it would be a road that the township is not responsible for. All the other roads are. Though the county has jurisdiction over the roads, we often, as you know, through the board, assist them with paying for, you know, resurfacing roadways, reconstructing or widening. A private road would be the responsibility of the HOA or the management company moving forward. It would not be something that the township would, I guess that would be the benefit of it.
And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because I see a great cutoff here. When the traffic backs up, people will just be cutting through this. How is that treated? You know, are we going to run into problems with all these residents saying, hey, wait, there's a private road? People are going on there. Do we have any responsibility to police that? Or how is that treated?
So they could So they could put up signs, no through traffic. I do know that about a year ago, when we were working with them, the county did require a traffic study for this intersection, for this project. And that was one of the things that I specifically asked them to look through was cut through traffic with regards to this. The results of that traffic study didn't indicate that that would be an issue, but they, they are, you know, allowed to put up signs, no through traffic. If you think of the property immediately across Card Road from this, it's almost the identical setup where you have essentially a road ringing around a commercial plaza. And I'm not aware of any cut-through issues at that roadway. And further to the south and to the east of this development, there's another road that's shaped exactly like that that could also be used for cut-through. And again, I've not heard any complaints of cut-through traffic at this time.
Okay. So you have no major objections to make it a private road?
I would have no major objections to that. There, I was going to go through, there are a few items with regards to the ordinance that you have to consider when determining whether the street should be private. One of the big ones is that it's not needed for continuity in terms of the public street system. I don't think this is, this is not a connectivity issue that, you know, if this road were to be closed in the future, it wouldn't disrupt any traffic patterns, I think, in the area. That it must be located in a multifamily residential development or a commercial development, which it is. The public utility easements need to be provided for still. The township would still want those easements. And that if it were a dead-end street or a cul-de-sac, it cannot exceed 600 feet in length, and that's not a, not applicable. It's not a cul-de-sac or a dead-end.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley?
To follow Mr. Oliver on that particular item, it, and I was wondering about this because it does say the streets provide public utility easements that are at least 60-foot wide. We have 30 feet setback from the width of the road, which is 28 feet. I'm not sure, there's no indication as to where a utility easement might be, but is that going to be doable to have the 60, at minimum, 60-foot-wide utility easement for that residential area?
Well, I guess I'll defer to Mr. Van Tifler. We do have a number of private streets in the township already, so I'll let him explain how that works.
Okay.
So in areas where we have private streets like this, the public utilities and water and the sanitary sewer would be in an easement dedicated to the township, and that might overlap with the actual private road. So it may go into the, into the street a little bit and also into the front yard. The rest of the development would all be common element. So, you know, the road, the storm sewer that's in the backyard, all of the landscaping, the detention areas, all that stuff would be in a common area. That would be the association's responsibility. Our responsibility would be just for those two utilities, a water main and the sanitary sewer, and easements dedicated to us. But it's not dependent on where the road is. Obviously, these utilities get closer to the road when you have a private road situation like this because you don't have that extra space for the right-of-way.
Correct.
And they don't have that extra space because it's, this is set up for a private road. The setbacks are based on the back of the curb instead of from the right-of-way line, which it would normally be. And we have a number of these types of developments in the township where duplexes are off of private roads. It's a fairly typical way of handling it.
So the 60-foot-wide would, would be doable if even taken up by part of the road?
Yes.
And the front yard?
Yeah. We've looked at, we've actually started looking at the engineering on this development already, and we haven't seen any, anything that we would object to at this point.
Okay. Thank you. I have more.
Sure.
And I'm not sure if these can be answered real quickly or if they won't be covered in a subsequent review. But one of the items was sidewalk connectivity, and that being for the, right now, the daycare doesn't have any sidewalk connectivity within the complex. And when I was looking at one of the options where there's two, two units or two lots versus the one, that would even be a little more difficult. But there is the ring, you know, sidewalk around the building as it's shown now, not that that's the way it's going to end up, but there's nothing that connects it to the other interior sidewalks.
If I may.
Safely.
Yeah. I think because of the nature of the childcare facility, I think there's a certain amount of security and maybe privacy that they'd want to try to go, you know, work towards. Ultimately, you'll see an actual site plan that'll come before you for your review. Because we're in the preliminary stages right now, we're not proposing anything like that. We didn't want to necessarily make that a requirement of the overall site plan because, again, the nature of childcare, maybe they didn't want, they just want to try to keep some of the strangers or try to not encourage too much pedestrian traffic in that area because then, you know, somebody may feel uncomfortable, then there's false calls to the Macomb County Sheriff, maybe somebody doesn't look like they have good intentions, that kind of thing. So that's kind of the logic behind why we're not showing that connectivity other than the frontage along 21 Mile Road itself.
Right. It's right next to a, you know, oil change place, though, so there's, and there's a lot of cars there.
Yes, sir.
And there's even a pass around, so there's a lot of traffic there. I didn't know how it needed to be worked out, but if it is a requirement and there is a gate, a lock gate on the perimeter fence that you have already.
On the back side.
Yes. And that was only operable by the users, then maybe something would be connected behind it or what have you. So that was one item, but it sounded like from the planning department's review that that's something that had to be revised and added to the plan. I'm not sure if the intent was, in some of the other issues, that it had to be submitted before we can accept it as being up for approval. So that would be one question to you, Mr. Box, if the recommendations and the requirements of our ordinance need to be met before we can act on it.
For connectivity, I think what Mr. Izzy is mentioning is correct, that they, they would not necessarily want to have connectivity to the oil change or even the gas station. They do have, through their parking lot, connectivity to the sidewalks that front on 21 Mile Road, which could then lead them across the drive aisle and back into the complex. So they, ultimately, one could still walk there, but in, as far as internal connectivity to the other ones, it's certainly something we can address at the site plan level. I do think it's a fair point, if, you know, if you wanted to address that now, it could be, but I think it's absolutely something that can be handled at the site plan level.
Just something I needed to bring up because it was brought up by the planning department, and it's something that would be, need to be considered as you develop further the plan. And I know some of the elevations of the gas station, the car wash, they don't, they don't match the plan, and so that'll be worked out. A drop-off is required for the, a drop-off in pickup area is required for the childcare area. From the plans, it doesn't show anything that's kind of protected, so, you know, you can stop. Otherwise, it stops all the traffic really the way it's laid out now. So that and the fact that there's, there's not as many parking spots, that may affect the size of your building or just the layout. So considerations, but apparently need to be made before there can be a final approval anyway of the site plan. And then materials, as you mentioned, Mr. Box, that all of the materials have been identified on the drawings that we have anyway, except for the oil change building. It just shows a picture. I don't know what they are. And my eyes aren't as good as they used to be. I could guess, but everything else was, you know, covered completely. That was just a picture, and I knew more about the sign and its dimensions and things like that than I do about the building and its heights and materials on it. So again, that's something that supposedly is required for site plan approval. And then the fire department reviewed this on October, in October. The plan has changed a bit, especially with the drives and the entrance to the 21 Mile Road. And I don't know if this change has affected their review, but at least the date on the document we have, the letter, indicates October 20th, so.
Well, the fire department, when they reviewed it initially, they reviewed with Phase Five being one unit or being Phase Five and Six being two units. They also reviewed it having only one drive access to 21 Mile and Two, and they had no objections to any of those, so.
Either. Okay.
The concept of how this is laid out hasn't changed since then.
Okay, great.
Just the use in that phase has.
And that clarifies that then. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Box, just a couple questions following up with what Mr. Bentley had. I think he was referencing some of the conclusions at the end of the planning review, and some of them certainly seem, from what you're talking, what would normally be our practice to be site plan issues. So I just wanted to make sure for my own clarification, a couple points. One, I recall reading the PUD agreement correctly. This PUD would not allow for variances. So in the, if I, and I could be incorrect with that, Mr. Alloia, we've read a few of them recently, but I believe that's in the agreement. If the childcare is shown with 54 spaces and it needs more, would we have to place that as part of the agreement? So is it more appropriate to be approached now as opposed to later?
I guess I don't have the PUD agreement in front of me. I actually gave Mr. Alloia my copy when he got here this evening, so he has my copy. So I can't confirm that that's in there. I do not remember seeing no variance in there. But if that were the case, if it is in there, and I've missed it, they would, they would fit how many parking spaces they could fit, and they would have to adjust the building size accordingly to meet.
Or amend the agreement at some point. If it wasn't specifically called out now and put in as a.
Correct.
Okay. And that would be the case with all of these things, if they conflict with the ordinance that we want to address them now?
I think, I think you're mistaken, just, Mr. Tuckfield, if I may. I think if there's a variance of the general design plan, then they would come back. But each of these sites will come back with their own site plans, right? Because you have individual pads. They may need variances within those. So if there's an issue with the Valvoline or there's an issue with, you know, the childcare within there, then they can come back for that. But, but again, the question is whether there's an amendment to the general design plan or not. That, I think that's what you're reading, but I'm not sure what provision you're speaking of.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't have it written down here. It was as I was reading this, and I don't have the whole agreement in front of me.
I would say that, you know, in terms of, you know, the locations and things like that of the condos, residential condos, they've spent a tremendous amount of time with engineering. They're dealing with engineering now and things of that nature. I think that the chance of there being variances in that situation are very low. I think you may have a variant situation depending on each site, what they have going on within their site plan.
Well, and within a PUD, you know, other times, and I think perhaps has been abused in the past, if, you know, if there's something that might vary from the ordinance, it's been placed into the PUD preemptively, which seems like it might be appropriate in this case if it was necessary.
I will say that we've vetted this quite a bit. We spent weeks working on this between myself and Mr. Chirco and the administration, so we've spelled out quite a bit here. And I think the chance is low for variance at this point, but I can guarantee you that.
And I'll, I'll get that provision because I might have misread it. It's my memory of reading it earlier and now putting it back together so I could completely have it off.
No worries.
In that, in that particular case, then, yeah, that was my only concern, was that we weren't locking ourselves in, if that was something we need to take now. But if you guys are confident with it, I'm good with it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone? Mr. Oliver?
Did you have something, Dan?
Go ahead.
Here's a quick question. Getting back to Spring Valley, is that going to be streetlit?
No, we would not propose any streetlights like we would put in a detached, single-family type condo like we're doing, for instance, at Monarch right now. This would, what we normally do on the duplex-style unit, we'll do like a photo cell, coach light at the garage on either side of the garage door, and they run. I wouldn't consider it a high-intensity light, just something for some ambiance, just to light the driveway and a little bit of the sidewalk and the street itself. There will be streetlights, there will be entrance lights at the entrance signs, so we will have those that, you know, obviously light up the entranceway, but no streetlights, you know, the big tall DTE acre.
You're going to rely on the, on the garage lights, but they'll go on automatically?
Correct. Well, they'll stay on, and they'll have a photo cell, they'll stay on overnight, yes, just to light the street. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Spataforo?
Yes, just to confirm, I guess this would be to Mr. Izzy, as far as the general design concept for the proposed commercial buildings in our packet, it looks like those commercial elevations, all of them will be having entrance facades to those buildings facing to the north, 21 Mile Road? Is that a fair statement or?
The gas station, the Valvoline, and the childcare, whoever that childcare ends up being, if assuming that is a childcare, and I think very strongly that it will be, those three buildings would face 21 Mile Road. The gas, the car wash obviously would face Card Road.
Okay. And the rear of those proposed commercial buildings, it's designed perhaps, it'll be the rear of those buildings that would face the residential component pretty much?
That's a fair statement. Which is why we obviously have the screening, the landscape screening between.
Right. Just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, sir.
You good, Mr. Spataforo?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone? All right. Well, then I need a motion at 7:17 to open it to the public.
Slow moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Seconded.
Seconded and by Mr. Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anybody opposed? Okay. And motion passes. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak on this item? Anyone? Now's the time. I'll give it a moment. Anybody? All right. Well, then we will go ahead, and I'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
Slow moved.
Mr. Oliver?
Support.
Mr. Shudo? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Do we have a motion on this item?
No further discussion, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend the general design approval for this planned unit development for Fremont, permanent parcel number 08-35-100-004, as presented by our planning department and pursuant to township department reviews already on record.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spataforo?
I have a question.
Oh.
I'll support the motion, then we can get to, then we can get to discussion.
Sure.
Okay. Does that include the Spring Valley to be private or public? Are we going to do that separate?
You know, I should amend my motion. I would like to do it at this time since, as Mr. Box pointed out, it's within the purview. Within my recommended approval, I would also recommend as a condition that that road be considered and designated as a private road to be maintained, you know, in the future, Spring Hill.
Spring Valley.
Spring Valley.
Road, maintained by, you know, initially the developer and then at some point taken over by the association.
We would also suggest the recommendation to remove the utility and general common element plans as part of your approval or your motion, I'm sorry.
We'll add that as well, too. Thank you, as you stated.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spataforo, seconded by Mr. Tuckfield?
Still supported, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bentley? Mr. Bentley?
Please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hurdie?
Yes.
Mr. Pervezano?
Yes.
And Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we're on to Old Business B, Site Plan, Hampton Manor of McComb. Permanent parcel zero eight zero seven four zero 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 one six, located on the northwest corner of Twenty Four Mile Road and Garfield Road. Section seven, William J. Thomas petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Izzy.
Thank you, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, so the property, I know it's been before you a few times already for other items for conditional rezoning, as well as some items at the ZBA, some of you were at that meeting as well. But it is currently zoned R two L through the conditional rezoning process. And the applicant is requesting a site plan approval to develop a housing-for-older-person facility, which will include an assisted living building and a memory care wing. So, in our review, these were all in your packets as well, that they have met all of the setback requirements, the minimum usable floor area per dwelling unit. They did seek a variance on that, that was denied, so they revised their plans several weeks ago. They are now all over the three hundred and fifty square feet requirement. Building height and facade designs have been met as well. They do have a variance for parking reduction. That was approved by the zoning board of appeals at a special meeting on November seventeenth. The screening that they are showing provided matches the approved conditional rezoning agreement. And the existing wetland along the north property line will provide the natural screening from the north properties. The green belt and six-foot wall along the west property line are also shown. And they're not required a specific count for landscaping, but their features are shown throughout the site on their plans. They did provide their light pollution, if you will, documents as well. There's zero-foot candle at all property lines. So, I did want to touch on a few things, some concerns from the residents. I know many of them are here this evening. There was a PowerPoint presentation that was printed out for you at the last meeting, although the item was tabled. It was included in your packet, again. So, I wanted to touch on a few of the things that they had concerns about. So, first one being the seventy-five-foot green belt being provided. Mr. Tuckfield specifically might remember that this did come before the zoning board of appeals to make a determination. There was a conflict in the ordinance about fifty feet versus seventy-five feet. The zoning board of appeals made the determination that the fifty-foot would prevail, so that's what they moved forward with. The fifty-foot wide green belt and setback were also a part of their conditional approval, or conditional rezoning process as well.
Mr. Box, if I could ask one question while you're in line. That definition was not for this parcel, that was for another, that was brought up because of another development, I believe, at Hall Road and Card, if I recall correctly?
It was Mr. Thompson.
Was it Mr. Thompson on this one?
Who came in for this specific development.
Thank you.
The green belt and six-foot wall to create the hundred percent screen is required on the west property line. So, again, touching on the residents' concerns, the proposed fire lane. Residents have expressed a concern that the fire lane will cause headlight glare. A six-foot tall wall and landscape features should reduce potential impacts on the fire lane. I would also say that, though it does say "fire lane" on the site plan, I think that's a bit of a misnomer. Typically, a fire lane is a way for them to provide access to their hydrants. This is more of an emergency access drive. A lot of schools do the same thing, where they're essentially sidewalks. These are gated at the ends, there's a Knox box that allows only emergency vehicles back there, only in the case of an emergency. So, they are typically used more as walkways or sidewalks. But regardless, in the rare instance, and hopefully that instance doesn't ever happen, if there is an emergency and a vehicle is needed to go back there, you know, a six-foot wall and landscape features do exist back there. And then, lastly, with regard to the fifty percent total open space, this was another concern raised by the residents. They do provide fifty-two percent of open space. I know they had some concerns about counting some of the areas, but the courtyard areas do add up to over twenty-four hundred square feet, so they do meet the ordinance and can be counted. They do have fifty-two percent, fifty percent is what's required per ordinance. Outstanding items, there are a few engineering items, and I know Mr. Antiflin is here and could maybe address those. But they're generally with regards to drainage and detention. That being said, I do also have a letter that was in your packet, it was given to you last time as well, from a resident. The resident was not able to attend on the seventh, but I do see he's here this evening, so I guess I'll defer to him, then, if he wants to read the letter. I would have read it, but he's here, so I will allow him to read his own letter for the record, so.
Petitioner?
My name is Bill Thompson from, get this, Seberke Slener. We just merged with another company from the west side of Detroit.
Give us your address, too, though.
Excuse me?
The address, too.
One seven zero zero one Nineteen Mile Road, Suite Three, Fulton Township.
Thank you.
Here to answer questions you might have. The facility is a senior housing facility. It's for assisted living and memory care units. They have several of these in different parts of the metropolitan area. The closest, what I think, is at Fifteen Mile Road, just west of Kelly Road. I believe Mr. Box covered everything pretty thoroughly. I'd be willing to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, let's turn it to the commissioners.
One quick one.
Sure.
The project won't have any effect on the Howard drain, will it?
No. And we're, the Howard, we're staying outside the Howard drain easement. Excuse me, we will have a driveway across the Howard drain.
Okay, because I know the Howard drain, I've lived on it for twenty-seven years, and the twenty-seven years, when I moved in, we had the hundred-year flood quite a bit, and recently the waters have been staying down, and the flow of the water's been pretty good. So, I just want to make sure that the residential subs behind it wouldn't be affected by the Howard drain.
Well, I hope the work they've done on Romeo Plank Road would even improve the Howard drain.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shudo. Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
May I?
You may. Go ahead, sir.
Just wanted to get out some of the things that I noticed and some of the things that were mentioned, but I had questions on. Number one being, the bridge is not identified on the drawings. No culvert, no formal bridge, just looks like a driveway, and yet, you know, it does show the variance in the grades. So, what is the intent there?
We're proposing a seventy-two-inch culvert, concrete culvert within sections.
Okay.
I believe it's, I think it's seventy foot long.
I know that'll be further covered in, you know, final site plan approval and such?
In the engineering plans. Also, that has to be proved by the Eagle. We have a permanent application in for that culvert.
Okay.
And for a little bit of infringement of wetlands along the edge of the drain.
Okay. The existing drains along the west property line, where the wall is going. There are catch basins there, I noticed. What do they call them? I forget, the Beehive? Catch basins.
Right.
It was noted that there was an easement for those, for the maintenance of that, of those drains. I don't see the easement on the site plan. Do you know where that easement is, or can you identify where that is?
That should be a twelve-foot easement adjacent to the property line, and it is contained wholly within the subdivision.
It is?
Yes.
And it's only twelve foot, or twenty foot?
Generally, twelve foot.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to correct that. I looked it up tonight, it's a twenty-foot wide easement, according to the plat for the subdivision. For the most part, there's one section that's twelve foot, but the other, there's one lot that's twelve, and the others are twenty.
And they're all on the subdivision side?
All on the subdivision side. They have to be.
Okay. Then my next question is, picking up those, are those currently being distributed underground or above ground to the drain ditch?
Yes, they run parallel to the property line, and I believe they dump directly into the Howard drain at our northwest corner.
At the northwest corner, okay. And will those be maintained when the development is, constructs the six-foot wall and the berm for the plantings? Will those, will that drainage, well, be maintained and engineered for? For that adjacent property?
We're not gonna do anything on their property. We'll be placing the wall and all the landscaping on our property, and everything from the wall to us will drain into our system.
But the drain that currently, as you said, goes on the northwest corner of the drain, how will that reach the, how will that reach the drain? Or the?
Those pipes are entirely within the subdivision.
Oh, they are?
Yes.
Okay. So, there would be nothing cut off by foundations or anything else, so those will not be? Is there any drainage, surface drainage, that runs towards this property, you know?
It's all pretty flat. What we plan on proposing to the township through engineering is to put in a sectional wall that will set on post, and will leave about a four-inch gap underneath the wall. So, any drainage coming from the west, in this case, if it continues to flow towards the wall, it'll flow through the wall, underneath the wall, and into our property, and we'll pick it up.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to alleviate my concerns for, you know, trapping any of your water on the other side, or allowing for it somehow. So, I appreciate that description, that helps a lot in my understanding of what happens out there. Because you say it's pretty flat, and we've seen pictures on the information that was being given to us, plus, you know, when we drive around after it floods all over the place, we see that water going everywhere. So, being able to pick that up and having consideration for the areas adjacent, I needed to have that in my head. Let me see. The screen wall texture, is that only on the east side of the wall?
Both sides.
Both sides? Along the drive, the west, or the east drive and parking, there is a retaining wall.
Correct.
And the details, you know, there's a simple section through it, but, and it shows a guardrail there. My question is, will their guardrails be continued on the bridge as well, or?
Probably not.
Probably not.
There's enough room on the bridge to have a gradual slope to transition down to the drain.
Okay. But the highway guardrails are above grade, right?
Yes.
And it would flow around that? I'm just wondering, that's quite a drop, six foot. And in bad weather or whatever, just wondered if there was any provision for safety there?
The entrance road will be curbed.
Okay.
But there's no intention, unless the engineering department wants to have something in there. But I don't anticipate it at this time.
Okay. Is there any fenced area planned for the memory care courtyards?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see any fenced area there, unless it's all-inclusive of the site, but none at the?
Let me check that. Yes.
Yeah, usually you see that, you know, so they can at least be outside and.
They all have, I think they all have door wall entrances into that courtyard area.
I didn't see any door walls in the connector from the memory care to the assisted living. In fact, the elevations don't match, only because they have a few windows. The plans show all windows on one side and, but I didn't see any doors, either on elevation or, or.
The elevations don't show the courtyard.
Pardon?
The elevations don't show the courtyard, they just show the northeast, west, and south side.
Yeah, but for the memory care, right? That's a, that's a separate building with a connector? So, it's the courtyards, I'm thinking on the east and west sides, is what I'm talking about.
Between the two units, between the wings for the memory care and the assisted living, correct.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't see any doors, or, but if that's the intent, thank you. There's a note on your plans that talk about underground retaining, or retention, or storage.
Correct.
And then, I think on the engineering plan, it indicated that that's not allowed, and that there has to be a detention, a retention basin added to the site. I was wondering what your thoughts are as to where in the world that would be.
We're under the impression, and have been talking to the township engineer, they are considering using underground detention. And it's supposedly relatively imminent. If, for some reason, the township does not develop that standard, then we'll have to go back with a revised site plan, showing detention upon.
Okay. And that underground detention, if it's put in, is that going to in any way encroach on the drain?
No.
The existing drain, so that'll be elsewhere?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. There's a walk on the southwest side of the assisted living. A stoop was required or to be added on one of the previous reviews. There's no walkway from that stoop to the road as in all of the other stoops. Is that, is that a omission, or just is that what you want to do? Comes from the club room on that southwest corner.
Must be something we missed, but there will be a walk from any exterior door.
Okay, all right. Just, yeah, for exiting, I thought that that should be done. They have a privacy fence along the road, future, well, along the sidewalk, along the future, it's Garfield, right? That privacy fence looks to be just a rail fence.
Not a privacy fence.
Oh, it's not?
You mean adjacent to the Garfield Road right of way?
Yeah.
Well, that's required because of the drain.
Okay.
It's a six-foot decorative, assimilated wrought iron fence.
So, my question is, there's a note regarding the privacy fence, I just wondered where it was, because I didn't see where there was a privacy fence.
No, there is no privacy fence.
Okay, so there is none. Okay. And I think, I think all my other questions are, oh, is there any lighting in the courts? The lighting?
Yes.
Lighting shows zero in the courtyards. And, but maybe that's for site lighting, I don't know.
That would be a site lighting, this would be lighting at the outside of the dories.
Okay. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else?
I got this one quick question, maybe, Jim. If we do go with the underground detention, and I know we're still studying it, would it be pumped out?
Well, we won't know those details for a while, but my intention would be no. I'm not a fan of pumping water. I think that drain is probably deep enough that you can store and yet gravity the outlet into the drain.
Okay.
Without a pump.
So, so the storm sewers, again, if we went that route, would take the water in, bring it up to a point, and then it would slowly go out into the drain?
Right. There's a restriction at the outlet to the drain that only allows the water to go in the drain so fast.
Okay.
And then it slowly lets the pond go down, empties out, and then when another storm comes in, it fills back up and goes through the same cycle.
Okay. And then one other question on it. They talked about this on that wall, in a way to get water through it. So how would that be designed?
So the way those backyards should work is all of the drains that's coming off the house, the deck, the pool, whatever's in that backyard should go into a swale that's along the property line and is directed into those catch basins. We don't have the topographic survey yet, but if for some reason those rear yards are not, have not been constructed that way or have been altered, so the water actually goes across the property line by those basins onto the adjacent property, then we would have to deal with it at that point. You can put weep holes in. What Mr. Thompson is talking about is a, basically a hung paneled wall that would allow the drainage to go underneath it. But you'd still have the screening above it that would prevent the lights and sound and whatever else from going through. But we won't know that until we actually get the topographic information and can look at the drainage and how everything is set up.
Okay.
That'll be the next step.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Van Tiflin, the concern from the citizens is the water. How is the township going to address that?
So if we're talking about the runoff going into the drain, and I think it was mentioned earlier that there have been, you know, issues with the drain. The Drain Office has very stringent construction standards that must be followed. They have ultimate jurisdiction because it's their drain. The township typically follows along with their standard because they're the ones that dictate how much water they'll accept in that drain. We have our own standards so that, you know, we have confidence that what they're designing is going to be able to function. We'll have an operation and maintenance agreement with the property owner. So if for some reason that site goes bankrupt and is abandoned, and there becomes an issue and the water's going into the drain or it's flooding, we have the ability to go in, correct the problem, and then backcharge the property owner. So there are a number of safeguards, but like Mr. Thompson said, there are three different agencies that ultimately have jurisdiction as to how much water's going into that drain. The township, Macomb County Office of Public Works, and then Eagle State. So they all have jurisdiction. We're all going to be looking at this, but that happens during the engineering review process.
So he has to pass all three of those?
Yes. Yes, they meet all of our requirements. And usually what happens is we all look at it. Whoever's got the most stringent standard is the one that governs.
You also mentioned the 20-foot drain and a section of 12-foot, correct?
Yes. That's the easement width, yes.
But you said it was on the resident's side?
Yes.
I hear that. Explain that to me, because I'm not sure I understand that.
So when the developer built the subdivision, they were required by the township to put in rear yard storm sewer. Rear yard storm sewer does two things. It allows for the sump lines from the basements to have a place to discharge, but it also allows all the surface drains that's coming off the house and the pools and the patios and whatnot in the backyard to have a place to go. And what's supposed to happen is it goes to, there's one in every other lot corner, there's a high point in the middle, and that drainage comes off the backyard into that rear yard swale and into those catch basins. That's what's supposed to happen. I'm not sure. It sounds like there's some concern with regard to how this particular rear yard area has been maintained, constructed, whatever you want to call it. So those are the things that we're going to have to look at. You know, our standards say you can't dump water into somebody else's property, and you can't cut off somebody that is naturally going there. So these houses have been there for 30 years or more. We have to deal with what we have unless they can work out something to regrade these backyards to make them drain the way they're supposed to. So if they can't do that, then they have to accept the water, and so the water's going to have to pass under the wall and then into their storm drainage system on their site.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bentley?
I had one last question, just a thought. I know it was a concern about the service drive or so-called fire lane on the west side of the building proposed, and then it's asphalt, and that taking up some of the room of the green space. Is there, is there any opportunity to use paver blocks where they use vegetation that grows in?
We call them grass pavers.
Grass pavers.
Yeah. The fire department no longer allows those or accepts those as an alternate to a hard paved surface. We've run into this in a number of sites, and it's either concrete or asphalt is basically what they're saying to us. We have a number of sites in the township that previously were approved and have that, but they will not allow that anymore.
So this, this drive is a fire department requirement and does have to be paved? Or is it just a service, service road that...
This is a fire department access. So they requested it. It meets their standard. There are gates on either end, so it's not used for traffic trying to get around the building. It's only, it would only be used if the fire department needed to get behind the building to fight a fire or take care of whatever other emergency is back there. Otherwise, the gates would be locked.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Yes, my first question would go to my colleague here, Mr. Tuckfield, since he is the chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. In the presentation, I understand that the ZBA denied a requested variance for the increase of square footage of the units. As a result of that denial, is there a reduction in the number of units as far as it relates to the site plan?
Well, I'm not sure if it affects the site plan. I assume that the layout, the square footage of the building is the same, but I would assume that the...
The square footage of the building is the same?
The units are different.
It was reduced by three units.
Three units? So the request was that we have a, we have a minimum size for the, for the units. They were requesting for smaller than that. They did have some compelling arguments, but we did end up denying the variance, so. But the outlines should be identical to the perimeter, the outer perimeter of the building.
Okay. And just an overarching comment, maybe it's a little bit of levity with this to Mr. Sayed and Mr. Thompson. You do realize that if this is recommended and ultimately approved, that the assisted living residents and the memory care residents realize that across the street to the east on Fridays, to kind of mimic a famous program not too many years ago, Friday Night Lights, there's going to be a lot of noise there because I don't live that far away from there. So I hope that's obviously taken in consideration and the residents. If this is approved, who move in, understand that's just a reality of living in that area.
I'm sure before they move in, they will visit the site, and they'll know that Luther North is there. And the football field is farther back.
It's farther back, but I live further away from there on the south side of 24 Mile Road and a block west of where the Marathon Gas Station is in that particular development, and I can hear the cheers pretty well in the fall when I'm outside.
I can hear the baseball diamond. It's over there. I can hear that from my house, which is over there.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Anyone else? Anyone? Okay. At this time, I'd like, at 7:49, I would like to open it to the public with a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shudo.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It is, we're going to open it up at 7:49. Again, you have four minutes. And please come up and address your concerns after you state your name and address. And just know that they'll all be addressed, or as many concerns as possible will be addressed at the end. So, thank you.
My name is Rachel Appy, and I live at 53092 Frida Drive. I'm the third parcel north of 24 Mile Road. And I am also the author of that presentation and those slides. I hope you've had a chance to look through them because they do contain things like pictures of our concerns and the amount of water that is currently sitting on this property that we can see every day from our backyards. So to say that these Beehive Storm Sewers, which are supposed to be managing the, according to the Macomb County Water and Sewer as well as the Road Department, it's supposed to be managing the water runoff from 24 Mile Road as well as storm rainfall and connecting it to the Howard Drain. So that's the issue here is, I don't know if you know about this property in general, but Frank Karam actually owned both pieces, completely just leveled the entire section, and then eventually split it off once he did this development. So originally, it was, you know, a couple of storm sewers. He didn't really care because he owned the property behind. So as long as that water went somewhere, it wasn't a big deal. But now it is going to be a huge deal for us. If you put this large, over 40,000-square-foot facility, large parking structure, where is all that water rainfall going to go? The storm rainfall runoff? If you take out all the vegetation that hydrologically absorbs and you are altering, as they say, wetlands that are existing on both the north corner as well as the west, there is over 0.6 acres of wetlands existing there. They do not have applications or approval to go over the Howard Drain. They do not have any existing DEQ or EGLE approval to alter or change in any way the wetlands. And if you actually look and just drive by that property, you see it's pretty much all wetlands because it does contain all wetland soil on that property. So just going back to it, we do have a serious problem with water, not on our property, but we can see it in the back, in our backyards along that westerly border between basically 24 Mile to the Howard Drain. In fact, the first two parcels just north of 24 Mile have constant standing water year-round, right on that parcel's boundary there, and it actually is contained in the proposed development. So to say that there's not an issue of water is just, it's something that if you just go out there and visit, you'll see it. It's there all the time. And our current water needs are not being met by this, so it's a big issue for us. To go to some of my concerns, there was not any in the conditional rezoning. There was no mention of a 50-foot change to the setback. It's 75 feet for any residential development with housing for elderly persons. So it must be 75 feet. It cannot be 50. There was nothing mentioned in the conditional rezoning. It was just specific to the land use that was approved. Furthermore, the fire lane issues, they wanted to consider that part of the 50%. On 11/17 with the ZBA meeting, they mentioned that there's 50% calculations for the green space requirement. That was prior to the addition of the fire lane, which is now asphalt, and that is not considered green space. Furthermore, the courtyards are, they're designating as public spaces, but they are individual private patios, places you can put your grill, your nice patio set on. Those are not public-use green spaces. If you have somebody that has an individual access point and they only have, you know, they have, I think it's 18 patios located in those public courtyard spaces, that could not be counted as green space. Also, the easement. I'd like to just address some of those concerns. Here's my parcel map. I have an 18-inch storm sewer along that back end there, and I have a 20-foot easement, and as does this parcel as well.
I'm sorry, but you're at your four minutes.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Take another 20 seconds or so if you want, but you're at your four minutes.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to address the easement issue. I've actually spoken to the county engineering water roadway, and they said that it needs to be at least a 12-foot easement on their side of the property, even though we have already 20-foot because originally it was going to be a commercial property. So there isn't an 18-inch storm sewer with Beehive-grade system, and it must be setback. You cannot build a wall with concrete footings right atop or next to, according to the county departments. So just...
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next.
Hey, gentlemen. Matt Terry, my wife Heather, 53118 Frida Drive. We live right there on Frida, which immediately abuts to parcel 807-400-16. And here once again tonight to express our complete opposition to the proposed Hampton Manor of Macomb Assisted Living and Memory Care Development. I promised my wife I wouldn't go off-script tonight, but you guys asked a lot of good questions, and as you can see, this is, this is a mess. There are additional changes to the proposed site plan again, and most notably the fire lane, now just on the other side of the fence from our houses in the supposed, as Rachel just said, green space, and the building right on top of the drains in our backyard with the 12-by-42-inch cement footings for the wall. This property is a mere six acres and is oddly shaped, as noted in previous letters and statements before the commission. These changes, in addition to the proposed past changes such as expanding parking while lowering the square feet for several rooms, only illustrate that this is the wrong development for this unique property. These proposed changes are detrimental and catastrophic to the residents of Frida Drive. We again would like to state that the community does not benefit from this development in any way. All of the services such as a hair salon, movie theater, and cafe in-house are in-house for the sole purpose of the occupants, not for any of us. We're also concerned with the lack of transparency the township has had with regards to this parcel. For instance, the video from the special commission meeting on November 17th was removed off YouTube. Then it was put back on, kind of strange. And then December 7th, the meeting was posted at the township or was not posted at the township in accordance with the law. Is there a reason for these things? Probably not, but we're not sure if there's anything nefarious going on or not, but we just want complete transparency. A recent phone call to Hampton Manor of Shelby Township, which by the way, Mr. Thompson is at 24 and Van Dyke. I don't know about your 15-mile thing, but there's one right down the street, revealed that it is not at capacity at this time. So why is there a need to build an additional property of this type when there's already one down the road, a few miles away? That's fact. Again, we are not opposed to development of this land. We are in favor of development as long as it is responsibly done, provides a benefit to our community. Hampton Manor of Macomb's proposed development of wetlands property is, as we've seen tonight with all of your great questions, irresponsible at best and does not provide a benefit to our community. In fact, it is the opposite. We ask that you vote no on this proposed site plan for the good of the residents of Frida and for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak? Sir? Are you good? Okay. Ma'am, what about you? Would you like to come up and speak?
No.
No? Okay. Because I know if my wife was in the audience, she'd speak. I got it. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and we'll need a motion to close the public hearing at 7:59.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shudo, supported by Mr. Provenzano. For the very last time, probably. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anybody opposed? All right, motion passed. Or not motion, but the public portion is closed. All right, Mr. Box, did you want to do some sharing with us?
Yeah, I think most of their concerns, again, deal with drainage, storm runoff. Some of it, it sounds like, exists on the property in question, some on their properties. I guess I can defer some of that to Mr. Van Tiflin, but I think that's something that's addressed in engineering. As was already stated, they have to go through Eagle, the county drain commission, as well as the township standards to handle all of this drainage and runoff. Where is it going to go? And if it cannot be appropriately handled, then it won't move forward through the engineering process. It was mentioned that they do not have any permits from Eagle, and again, I think that's because they're not to that phase in the process yet. That's why they wouldn't, wouldn't have those items. So, I don't know, Jim, if you wanted to address that any further, but...
No, I guess I would just like to mention that the township doesn't actually regulate wetlands. That's regulated by the state of Michigan. So that's part of the Eagle permit that they have to get from the state. We stay out of that. The county stays out of that. If they run into a... If they run into a problem with Eagle, then they'll have to address that, mitigate, or stay away from those areas, modify their site plan, and come back. So, they're, but the approval that the, that the planning commission is granting tonight is, is subject to all of these other things. If they, if any one of those things goes bad during that engineering review process, then that may mean that they have to come back to the planning commission with a revised site plan. And that, you know, includes the detention. You know, the runoff from, from the property, I understand that there may be an existing problem out there. They will be required to maintain all the drainage from their site on their site. I think I'd mentioned before that they can't dump water onto somebody else's property. They have to take that to the county drain, and that's gonna be through a detention system. What we have to do now is work out the details of what that detention system looks like. So, with regard to the comment about the, there's a requirement for a twelve-foot easement along the property line, not, not for a development like this, that would not be required. The subdivision maintains its own drainage, and this site maintains its own drainage. We don't mix them. Sometimes when subdivisions back up to each other, we'll allow the storm sewers to be mixed, but not, not with a commercial site, which is what this essentially is, in a residential development. You want, you want everybody to maintain their own, their own system.
Okay. All right, are there any final questions, or are you, are you ready to make a motion?
No.
Oh, question?
More questions.
Okay, Mr. Bentley, go ahead.
Clarifications.
No, I appreciate your responses, Mr. Tiflin. One, then, regarding your last item, the requirement by, whether it's the road depart, you know, the, the state or the, or the county road commission, or anyone else regarding an additional twelve-foot easement, that certainly would come up in their review of the site plan. Is that correct?
It, it would. Both agencies have jurisdiction over the property. There are curb connections or sidewalks that are in the road right-of-way, both in future Garfield, as well as on 24 Mile. And the Drain Office obviously has jurisdiction, because all the drainage will be tying into the county drain.
Right. So, so that item, it, it should be covered. The fact that, you know, you're not against, or it was stated that development is not, or not against development, anybody on that property, whether it's more homes, or whether it's this development or another development, would have to take care of that water problem on the property.
That is correct.
And they would also be required to not put more water on the adjacent property, and, and vice versa. So, so those arguments are kind of out, but they are to be further engineered during site plan approval.
Yeah, it, it, the way they're describing it, it sounds like there's water that's standing on this property that eventually gets so big that it's kind of encroaching into these backyards. If that's the case, then what they're doing on their own property will mitigate that. The only water that would be pooling in that backyard might be their own drainage that's coming off of the house. But like I said before, we're gonna take a look at this, and if, if there is water that's crossing that property line and not going into their storm sewer system that's on, in the subdivision, then we would have to look at weep holes in the wall, or a hung wall that would allow the drainage to pass underneath it, so that we don't have that pool of water up against the wall. A normal wall would have a foundation, it would be a solid barrier. That's not what we're talking about here. The detail that was on Mr. Thompson's drawing showed a, a panel wall. It does have a continuous footing, so we'd have to take a look at that and make sure that we're gonna be able to get the water underneath it, if that's necessary. But though, again, those are things that we would look at in detail at the next step.
Right. And as far as the, I know the gentleman, Mr. Derry, had, had written a letter. I would, I, I kind of ticked off all of those ideas or statements. A lot of them have been discussed and, and taken care of, I believe, to my satisfaction, but, but certainly, this development, if it were to go ahead, or any development, but this development, we have no control over. We don't, we don't ask them to come here, okay? And just so you know, we can't select who gets that spot, right? We can't, we can't let somebody allow water to drain onto the adjacent properties. We depend on other departments as well to make sure that everything is engineered. The fact that rooms were made smaller is not true. Less rooms were made, so that the rooms could remain the same size. So, there's a lot of statements that are kind of, maybe those were assumptions, but they're no longer, no longer valid, I would say. And in fact, I think a facility like an assisted living, even though one down the street isn't full. Someday, I'm gonna get older, okay? Everybody is. It's gonna be needed, and that's their business, if they wanna, if they wanna build that. So, you need to know, that's not our decision as to what they're gonna build there. If they wanted to put it, you know, something, as long as it meets the zoning ordinance, they can do that. I just wanted to get that off my chest. Too many times, we're the ones that make those decisions, and we do not.
Yeah. Well, good job.
It doesn't, it doesn't. That's the problem.
No, please, 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 please. You know, but I just, you know. All right, is there, Mr. Spataforo?
I guess to piggyback Mr. Bentley's comments, and maybe to echo with what you were saying, Mr. Van Tiflin, maybe this is an overarching question, hopefully to bring everything together, regardless of whatever is developed there, residential, commercial, it's not zoned for industrial, but would it be fair to say that since it's gonna go through a scrutiny of engineering reviews, that the water situation that currently exists will be improved? Whether it's this assisted living memory care facility, or if it was an extension of a residential development, or if it was commercial, going through the, the standards, whatever came in, be subject to, you know, the appropriate engineering reviews, and it would be faced with the same scrutiny by Macomb County Public Works Office, and also by the state of Michigan Eagle?
You are correct. The, the storm, storm drainage system may be differently configured for different types of uses, but the principles are the same.
And it would be better than just the current vacant land of muck, when it perhaps rains, and there's standing water? Because that won't exist in the future with the proper engineering, and the work, and the requirements associated with that. Is that correct?
Yeah, essentially, this is a, it's a vacant piece of property that doesn't have any, didn't go through the same process that a development would. So, if there's, if there are pockets where the, where it's just a low area, that water doesn't go anywhere. Whereas, as, as properties are developed, you take those low areas and put a catch basin in there, so that it can get from there into the county drain. So, you know, yes, your, your statement is, is correct in that it should improve the drainage, if, if that's what we think is going on, is, is in fact going on. We, we just need to go through the full engineering process to know what things we need to do for that particular site to manage the, the storm drainage. You know, there was a, a comment about, you know, infiltration and, and that kind of thing. The Drain Office does have requirements that mandate infiltration if it's possible. There are many sites in Macomb Township that it's all clay, and you can't infiltrate anything. The only thing that the, the ground will do is absorb the water and maybe feed the trees, so the water runs off. You know, if, if that's the case, then more detention might be required versus trying to put in a, you know, some sort of swale, bio-swale, that would allow the water to infiltrate into the ground. But all those things are reviewed in detail by the county as part of their, their process for approving that site before it's constructed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bentley?
Just one other that was brought up. The conditional rezoning was stated that it wasn't conditional rezoning to, to get rid of the seventy-five-foot mandate by the zoning ordinance and go to fifty. Could you clarify?
Well, I did think that that was the case. I, I, I've been wrong before. If that wasn't the case, I, I understand. But regardless, they wouldn't have needed to put that in their conditional rezoning anyways, because they came to the ZBA and got a determination. The ZBA ruled that fifty feet was, was the standard that they had to abide by.
And, and Mr. Bentley, if I could, I don't, I, for some reason, don't remember exactly how the meeting went. We've had a lot of ZBA meetings this year, so it's been hard to keep them straight. But one of the ZBA's function is to look at competing portions of the ordinance, when there is a disagreement between different portions of the ordinance, and say, this is the one that is, that takes precedence. So, in this case, that's what Mr. Box is indicating. Earlier this year, we looked at that, and we determined that the fifty-foot took precedence over the seventy-five-foot. It's not something we do a lot of, but we, we do do it on occasion. We've done it particularly with some of our newer ordinance on specifically setback issues, because we've had that a couple of times. Like I'll say, this one on the front and this one on the side, and they don't make sense together when you read it. So, it's one of those things that goes back into ordinance changes, but at the point of, at the point of someone trying to abide by it, that's one of the ZBA's responsibilities, is to, to interpret it and say, yes, this is what they meant, or no, it's not, so.
Just a, just a point of clarification. So, our, this has been conditionally rezoned. The township board approved it for this use. And as part of the conditional rezoning, if they need variances, they have to get them. They have to get engineering approval, they have to get site plan approval, they have to meet all, all codes, laws, and requirements. So, to say that it's not properly zoned for this is incorrect, because the township did conditionally rezonate for this use. So, that is complete. The interpretation of the ordinance predated the conditional rezoning, so they wanted to know if they, if it was possible as they went through the process. So, since then, they haven't come back for that issue, because the interpretation already took place. So, they had other variances that they requested, some were granted, some were denied, and we're here for the site plan approval pursuant to the conditional rezoning agreement. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, a couple of brief questions, and I think we can get these out of the way pretty quickly. Mr. Aloya, I think there's been a couple of comments about whether or not it was posted correctly. Obviously, on that particular meeting, we tabled it, so this one was posted correctly, regardless, but can you speak to that? Was it posted correctly last time?
My understanding, it wasn't outside the door, and I think that was brought to the attention, and it wasn't, but that's not, did not violate the Open Meetings Act. So, I looked into it, I looked at the allegation. Mr. Box and I sat down, looked at the statute that was cited. Only part of it was cited, not the entirety was cited, it was misquoted. So, I believe that we, see, the, the way that works is the township posts its meeting schedule at the beginning of the year, so the meeting didn't change, and so we met the ordinance by announcing the meeting, the date and time at that, at that time. So, everything's on the website, so the agenda's on the website, everything's on the website.
And in this case, we tabled it, probably good practice that we tabled it, but certainly not, not, not something where we were...
Not out of fear that we did anything wrong. I think we met the stat, township requirements. As a matter of practice, we usually post it outside the township as well, although I think that practice is kind of outdated, because we do have a website today, and most people use the internet. But it, it is something that we do.
Okay, very good. And then, Mr. Box, there was some comments, I think you might have addressed this earlier, but just to clarify, is the fire lane used as part of the landscaping calculation, the green space?
I don't believe that they use that to, to count as their open space. They were initially considering getting a variance, because they were gonna be below the fifty percent. They were not calculating their courtyards. That's what put them over the fifty percent and up to fifty-two percent.
And there seems to be some conflict as to whether we should be counting the courtyards, or you're confident those should be counted, because of the aggregate square footage?
Correct.
Okay. And then, just briefly on the video process, just as a point of information, as somebody who watches the video, videos go up. The videos go up live, they're live right now, and that video is live during the point of the meeting, and that usually is up for the remainder of the night, sometimes the next day. And then that feed is cut off, and then the feed, or the video, is then processed as a new video later. So, it's common that it will appear as two videos. I've had people ask me this before, and I've seen it. So, I know there was a question about that. I'm not sure that's what it is, what was in your case, but I know that's something that's pretty typical. So, just so everybody's aware, it usually is two videos, and that's because of the live versus archived portion. So, that was all comments I had.
And just to be clear, there's no requirement that we keep the video up, that's more of a public service that we do.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone else? Do we have a motion for this item? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Oliver?
I move we approve the site plan for Hampton Manor of Macomb, permanent parcel oh-eight-oh-zero-four-zero-zero-one-six, located on northwest corner of 24 Mile Road in Garfield, section seven.
Hmm, I remember that. Okay. Mr. Oliver made the motion. I will second the motion. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes.
Okay. Are there any nays, no nays? Then the motion passed.
Was this a clarification? Was this a recommendation or an approval? Was this a recommendation to the board, or was this an approval?
I believe because it's a site plan, it's an approval.
Yeah, correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item on our list is public comments on non, non-agenda items. Is there anyone that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Okay. I'll give it a moment. All right, let's move on to the next item, commissioners' comments. And I would like to go ahead and start by recognizing Mr. Provenzano and Mr. Shudo for, I don't know what the total number of years was, but I'm guessing over thirty, a little bit under forty. So, you two have been working and assisting the township, you know, longer than Mr. Tuckfield's been alive, for crying out loud. If you think about it that way.
Well, that's, uh, that's a nice thought there.
That's kind of cruel in a way, you know?
But you know, I was thinking about when I started, I think I was in my forties, and now I'm sixty-three, so it, I know I was on the planning commission for at least seven to nine years, and then I heard today was fifteen on the planning commission. A lot of people that I've met, I can think back, Mr. Kaminski and Mr. Gallagher, I learned a lot about the process in which this, you know, this township gets things done. And I always felt that it was kind of, kind of cool that I had a little bit of say. Because we're a non-elected body, we, you know, they gotta have some kind of a, you know, standard for us. So, when it was the zoning board of appeals, you had to have a, find a practical difficulty. Here, it's if the ordinance, you know, the proposed agenda item meets the ordinance. But things with site plan, and, you know, you, there were some things that you got to actually feel like you were a part of doing something for the, for the township. You had a little say, and I always liked that. And the panel that's up here now, commissioners, Mr. Bentley, you guys, you know, I, I obviously know that you know more than me about most of this stuff, but I've learned a lot. Mr. Kayes, I mean, I just, all the people I can think of, even, you know, Julia had some good things. I, I used to love when you and Mr. Gallagher, Charlie, used to, you know, think back of when there was just...
All right, easy. You can stop now.
Fields and dirt roads, and I used to think, wow. And I was just in elementary school back then. But yeah, it, it's, it's been a pleasure to be on the board, and, you know, serve the community. And like I say, I learned a lot, met a lot of great, great people, and commissioners, and my buddy over here, turn it over to him. We just, I, I, and, and for me, I, my...
We just, I, I, and, and for me, I, my grandkids moved, and there's so many things that are going on with my business that I just felt that I can't miss meetings. And, you know, I'm getting older now, I'm starting to push back or hold back a little bit. I go to Florida in the winter, and it's just, it's a progression, getting older. So anyways, me up Jasper.
And what I'm gonna say is, I remember my first, first or, first or second meeting when I was here, we, there was Arnold and Joa. And one of the agenda items were an alpaca farm. And I got my packet, I said to my wife, what the hell is an alpaca? I looked it up, and that was one of the big things we had back then. But I can say I've been through five supervisors, John Brennan, Mark Raybow, Janet Dunn twice, and now Frank Viviano. And I feel the Township is in a great place, so.
Well, you helped. You all put it there.
I hope so.
You did.
And I'm closer to the memory care than I am to the baseball field.
Literally, that's all I have to say and thank everyone.
Well, it's been an honor serving with you, and I'm sure everybody else is gonna say something.
Amen.
But I have some bund cakes over there, although I did trip in the parking lot, so they may be a little messy inside. But they were in my car, so I, they should be okay. But everybody make sure you get a bund cake, and, and they're just little tiny ones, so, you know, it's just a way of saying thank you for your years of service. So who would like to talk next?
I'm gonna speak.
Mr. Oliver?
Jasper and Nunzio, you guys have been great to work with, really. I've been able to call you guys anytime of the week. A lot of times on Sunday afternoon, I had a little break, you always answered the phone. We worked through a lot of issues together, and we worked for the residents, not for ourselves, for the residents. And it does take a special person to sit up here and listen to both sides of, of these issues, and then come to a determination of how it's gonna be dealt with. And it's been a pleasure. It really has been a pleasure. And not only did I know two Planning Commission members, I made two close friends forever, so thank you.
Amen.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I've probably served with you guys the least, but I've come to just recognize your, your knowledge and your insight and some of your quips, and just where you know the, the meeting's going, and I just appreciate that and your encouragement. You helped me quite a bit, and the materials that you guys gave just to help me has gone a long way, so I really appreciate it. And I'm sorry to see you go, and I didn't approve any of this, so. But being new, I don't get any say, so.
Being what?
Being new to this.
Oh, I thought you said being old, I get it. Okay. Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Spataforo.
Mr. Spataforo, did you wanna go?
I guess as of January, I won't be the newest member of this, this Planning Commission. I've only been here a year. If I go way back, I'm kind of a distant ghost that had some involvement here at once upon a time, before both of you gentlemen did. Charlie would remember. But I thank you guys for welcoming me. It's been my pleasure working with you, getting to know you, and having commonalities with both of you in certain areas. I only wish you both the very best in retirement with, you know, blessings, happy holidays. Enjoy your families, enjoy that time off, enjoy the upcoming weddings, things like that. It's just a part of a, a natural circle of life, and those of us that are at that age can really appreciate and understand it. So Godspeed to both of you and your families.
Thank you.
Mr. Tuckfield, did you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank Jasper and Nunzio for their time. I came on the board, I don't know, five, six years ago. I'm obviously the youngest one on here. Learned a lot from both of you. I've had a lot of great talks with both of you, Jasper particularly. Talked to you when you were up at your cabin in Port Santalac, and when you were at home, I'll miss it. But I've learned a lot from you guys. We've had some interesting meetings together. I don't think I'll forget Nunzio making sure that he tells the crowd that we have to vote by the ordinance. Someone's gonna have to do that, because Nunzio's been the guy for that. And Jasper's reasoned thoughts, his perspective, and his calmness, I think also will be missed. So appreciate all the time we've been able to spend with you guys. We'll miss you, but I know you guys have good stuff going forward, so. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I have one more comment that we got things done, that we started, we got the pickleball courts done. We got the dog park done. We went paperless. We got commercial and industrial. I mean, there's a lot of things that we did, and I'm happy that I can say goodbye.
Got your computers?
That's it. Our bylaws, and we did a lot.
But never say goodbye.
Yeah, no.
Be around, come visit us.
Oh, yeah. Perfect.
Jasper, just so you know, I will be calling you for your counsel leaving in Port Santalac or at your home. Even, I'll just be bugging you for the next four, five, six years, so.
And I want to let you guys know, I had a object dropped off on my front porch the other day, a pink flamingo. And it was a parting gift from Chairman Hardy. So if somebody finds a pink flamingo, Ben, you may find it, Charlie, Dan, or somebody, if you find a pink flamingo next to your car tonight, I don't know who it's from and who it's going to.
Who's gonna, who's gonna get it back, eh?
No one's gonna get it back. I'm gonna keep that.
Yeah, it is one of those gifts that just keeps on moving on, so. And Mr. Meyerly is in the audience, and he will be our newest member come January, so welcome, Mr. Meyerly. Okay. All right, so are we good, Commissioners? Let's go to the Macomb Township Board of Trustees liaison, Mr. Charles Oliver.
Okay, Mr. Hardy, thank you. Just a reminder, because of the calendar again, the BOT meeting is tomorrow night. So if anyone wants to tune in, that's something we need to know. The other thing we did that was kind of really, I thought was really impressive, last week, or two weeks ago at the BOT, we honored the De La Salle football team. They are state Division A, Division A state champs. And we gave them a plaque, but the most impressive thing, there was thirty-five of them football players were our residents of Macomb Township. And the two coaches were also residents, two of the coaches, I should say. It was just nice to see all them young faces, and, and it was nice that they're tied to us. And so that was a kind of a cool thing. It was a resolution to them, so that was nice. A couple other things, the Fire Department brought on three part paid fire fires, three more, okay? We had our audit from Plant Moran, and they said the Township's in great shape, so that's good to know. And the Wade property, we received an offer on it, okay? It was split, there was an offer on the backside of it for possibly homes. And then there's an offer on it for the front side for possibly a landscaping company to be there. But right now, they're going through their due diligence, so we don't know where it's gonna go from there, so there's no questions, Rich. That's where we're at.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And just Merry Christmas to everybody that's left in the audience and in the public. And again, thank you to guys for your service. It's been great. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. The ZBA liaison, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, two things this evening. First thing would be that we have, I believe, two terms. There's at least one term expiring this year, it might be two, I think it's two. And those are, I think dawn is the other one. My term is expiring on the ZBA. I believe I've been on the board agenda for tomorrow. But if I don't get approved, one of you gentlemen will have to take my place, because it's the fixed Planning Commission to ZBA spot. So I'm not sure if you're gonna wanna hope that I'm there or not, so. We do have that tomorrow, and I believe Ms. Lawson is currently being recommended for reappointment, but we shall see how the board goes on those two motions tomorrow. The other thing I wanted to mention was just a reference to the variance we talked about tonight with the senior facility. We felt at the ZBA level generally that there wasn't a practical difficulty on that particular variance. Common sense might say that maybe there should be a change there, but sometimes the ZBA isn't always supposed to rule on common sense. We're supposed to rule on practical difficulties. And I would just recommend that that's something we might want to look at in the ordinance if we still want to maintain that minimum square footage. I think it was pretty clear in the ordinance that it had been written that way originally, which is one of the reasons that they didn't get the variance. But it might be something that going forward, we might wanna change, particularly with the wants that we've spelled out in our master plan for more senior housing and, and some of the, the aging population, we might need a little more flexibility in how we handle that, so. So ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Planning Department items?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll tag on to whatever else is saying. Congratulations to Jasper and Nunzio. Obviously, you were here a lot longer than I've been here, so I can only speak for the last few years, but you've been fantastic to work with. I think Jasper was one of the first people to call me when I was hired. So he definitely welcomed me to the Township, so congratulations. And as Mr. Spatafor said, Godspeed to you and, and your families. A couple other items to touch on, Mr. Tuckfield mentioned the ordinance updates. We are working with Carlisle Wartman, Mr. Skurdo's firm. We're doing some in-house, some with them. Dick Carlisle from Carlisle Wartman is, is kind of spearheading the effort to, to really do a full overhaul and, and make sure everything, you know, get rid of some of those items that may conflict and things of that nature. So it's ongoing, it's probably gonna be a, a long process, but it has been officially started. We've, we've been looking at land uses allowed in certain zoning categories and all of that already. So that, that is definitely something that's underway, and you'll see in front of you several months from now, so. And then lastly, I will say, I believe in 2021, since this is our last meeting, I don't think we missed a single Planning Commission meeting. I know ZBA didn't miss a single meeting. In fact, we actually had an extra one. There was a special meeting in November. I don't think there was a single Planning Commission meeting missed in 2020. If there was, maybe one. That being said, we do not have a Planning Commission meeting on January fourth, so.
We do not.
We do not have any agenda items for, for that meeting, so.
There goes our perfect record.
Well, it's not planned, so.
I do believe we are gonna have Zoning Board of Appeals that week, so.
I just, I'd just like to ask one thing, that when the master plan's done, then Nunzio and I, and our names are mentioned.
They are, they are in there.
Okay.
Mr. Bentley has a question.
Can I ask a question of the Planning Department?
Want to ask a question?
Yeah.
Sure. Go ahead.
That's okay. We have to do an annual report.
Correct.
You guys are writing that, and then we have to review and approve.
Correct.
I was gonna mention, it was, Jasper had kind of reminded me, but to put on our agenda for our next meeting, which isn't the fourth of January, but maybe the next, either to review that and approve it, probably just review it. And then also appointment of officers. The third item was Jasper.
Bylaws.
Bylaws, approval of the bylaws. And I don't know if there's going to be any changes to them from our last change this year, but.
We can review them again? I mean, I can send them out with the packet and, and add it as an agenda item, if you would like.
I think it's something we have to do.
We did that yearly, just to dot our i's and cross our t's, and it's nothing major. Couple of years back, we really didn't have written bylaws, and we took care of that, and it's just something that I think that should be done by the Planning Commission yearly.
Just to review?
Correct. And if anything you think needed to be added or deleted, that, as far as the review would go.
No, I mean, I wrote them perfectly last time, so.
You know what? You must be a De La Salle grad. You did a great job, and I thank you for that, because we pushed for that for years, to get them written out like that and, and explain to us, and you did a great job.
I'm open for suggestions, you know, we always look at things with a fresh eye, so if there's any suggestions, we can talk about it for sure.
Just be aware of the net side of the table next year, so.
I think the chairman has a mute button, right?
I do. I'm, I'm good.
You'll go from four minutes to four seconds, so.
All right. Anything else? Then the motion to adjourn, I think we'll leave to you two.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Up to the microphone. I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Merry Christmas to everybody.
And I'll make a motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Shudo, Provenzano, Apollo Levin, signing off.